Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
I now call the Eastlime Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of February 1st, 2024 to order at 7:30 PM. Could we say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sir, Jason Ebor?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see everybody here tonight. First, we have our public delegations. Public delegation is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. And if you could state your name and address, please.
Sure. Penny Howell Heller, 61 East Patagonia Road. I'm speaking here on behalf of the Eastlime Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. I'm a biologist retired after 38 years working for CTDEP Fisheries Division, and now I'm Chair of the Natural Resources Commission. I'd like to read a written comment that I will submit for the record. Once again, the Eastlime Natural Resources Commission would like to express its concern over the ongoing development and possible expansion of Brookside Apartments, an affordable housing project which is being constructed by Paz and Construction LLC at 90 North Bride Brook Road. This project has already displaced a wooded slope that naturally protected the adjacent Bride Lake and Bride Brook. This water course supports one of the largest spawning runs in southern New England of alewife and an anadromous hearing.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
A question. This seems to be addressing the public hearing subject tonight.
So I would just add, there is a public hearing this evening on this subject where you will have an opportunity.
Would her testimony count in the hearing, or do we have to wait?
The way the agenda is constructed, it says anything on the agenda, but there will be a public hearing later where this testimony may be more appropriate into that hearing record.
I don't mind waiting.
Yet. That might be more appropriate.
But do you? Okay. I wasn't sure I was allowed to talk during the hearing, so that's why I did it now.
You will be. It's up to you if you want to speak now or during the hearing.
Does it matter?
Well, it'll be in the record during the hearing.
Okay, I can wait. Okay, sure.
And you'll have plenty of opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Whoever was next.
Sure.
Good evening. My name's Tom Kalal. I live on 80 Grassy Hill Road. Thank you all for serving our town. I'm grateful to live in the north end of town because I don't have to drink our water, public water. In the last numbers of years, I've learned about our drinking water. I kind of follow it and follow the sodium issue and how they say if you have heart issues, don't drink our city water. It's right on the well. It's right on the water report. And how we had, I'm not sure if we still do, but we had the MTBE, which was a gasoline contamination in our drinking water. And now we have the PFAS or forever chemicals in our drinking water. The first and last are carcinogenic. The middle one's hard on your heart. If you don't believe me, see the water report in the Water Department. We're a unique community because we get our water from an aquifer. This aquifer has been known statewide for its tremendous yield and purity. It starts in my neighborhood, actually, up on Grassy Hill. It goes through and under Powers Lake, under Lake Patagonia, under Route 1, by Ron's Gones, under I-95. Sometimes it surfaces into a little Patagonia Brook. Kind of flows its way down to Gordon Pond and down to the Sound. It's a gravel-packed aquifer, which is really unique because the drinking water is only six feet down. I didn't believe it, but if you'd like to see it, at the Flanders Baptist Church is a well that is about eight feet with a cement cover, and you can remove that cover and just watch that water flow. It's pretty cool to see. But of course, surely downstream, the contaminants enter and repump this water in our public water supply. Of course, they are treating in some way for the contaminants, but remember, at this point, it's been really pure water. Not long ago, the state came to this commission and the Conservation Commission and more or less said, hey, you know, we don't want to be in charge of your aquifer anymore. You guys should do it yourself. And by the way, you can shrink its boundaries. Of course, we didn't tell the water that was in the ground that we're going to shrink the aquifer protection area. Conservation Commission recommended staying with the current aquifer protection zone, but this commission voted to shrink it. You can now call it more of a wellhead protection zone, not an aquifer protection zone. Right after that, we got Costco. Of course, Costco wouldn't build without a gas station. And then lo and behold, because of that aquifer protection zone change, they were able to put it in. I'm not sure anybody told that water that flows underneath Costco that... And with Costco came other things in our town, disgustingly ugly, exit 74 project. Anyway, so all this water flows its merry way from gas station to gas station along Route 61, eventually down to the Sound. My, how we're doing a great job of destroying a beautiful water supply. But there are things we can do. It's a big problem, and it's big challenges, but there's little things we can do. First of all, we could revert back to the former aquifer protection zone shown in the 2010 POCD. We could post signs that were entering our aquifer, signs that say this is a clean drinking water area, signs that so people know that that water is only down six or eight feet. We could ask for further reduced salt use. We could turn over aqua protection to the Conservation of Natural Resource Commissions. And for the protection of the aquifer, we could create more two-, three-, and five-acre zones. There are more contaminants out there we haven't seen, like lead. Look what it did to Flint, Michigan, or what was the city. So I just ask this commission to discuss this now, maybe act for yourselves, for our kids, grandkids, and for citizens that might live here 300 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay. Thank you. There was someone else, I think? Please.
Hi, Lisa McGowan, 33 Spinnaker. So I've been here before. I think this is now my fourth time to speak to the zoning board, February 1st, 2024. My questions are this: Can we speak to items on the agenda? And if we can't, does that make any sense? Or if we can, is it on the agenda? Would the zoning board please consider being proactive when laying out how and when agenda items are chosen and whether the public can request additions? Are the agenda items in your bylaws, and are they in agreement? And if not, why not? There's much concern of the larger town issue of public engagement and transparency. Whatever your decision, maybe making your decisions across the whole town, universal for the boards and commissions, that would go to, I guess, the Board of Selectmen. And it just seems as if this zoning board has its own processes, processes. And I get that sometimes the content would sort of drive how things operate, but Robert's rules is Robert's rules. We have to have a common set of procedures and parameters. And then lastly, I'd like to speak to the New London Day article concerning the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm not sure who you speak to that is a veteran, but I am a veteran who's participated in hundreds of military ceremonies. And I've been the last in line to hand people a flag. So if you or anyone in this room wants to come and talk to me about how I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please do. And my address is here, and I'll give you my phone number. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak in the public delegation? No? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Appreciate everybody's input. Let's have a roll call. I'm here. Mr. Peck?
Yep.
Ms. Markovitz?
Yeah.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Kalal?
Yeah.
Mr. Paivo?
Here.
Mr. Peterson, I believe, is not here tonight. Ms. Susko is also not here tonight. Ms. Yuhas?
Here.
Behind. I think I see you behind. Thank you. I'm glad you're here. We also have Mr. Mahalan.
Here.
And Ms. Loroco, our secretary. Thank you. And our ex officio is here tonight. Good. Thank you. We'll move on to our public hearing, and I believe Mr. Peck is recusing himself. So Ms. Yuhas, would you please sit for him? And I believe Attorney Heller is here to present. And yes, he's going to present the application of Bride Lake LLC for site plan approval for the modification of the December 3rd, 2020 approval of an 80-unit affordable housing multifamily residential development pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 830G, increasing the total unit count to 100 multifamily units on the westerly side of North Bride Brook Road, 20.24 acres, now bearing street number 94, Assessor Map 9.0, Lot 37-2. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the commission. My name is Harry Heller. I'm an attorney with an office at 736 Norwich, New London, Turnpike, and Uncasville, and I represent the applicant Bride Lake LLC. I'd like to start with a procedural matter. Mr. Paivo, I'm going to ask you to recuse yourself from this proceeding. I'm aware of your testimony on public television on September 28, 2023, specifically concerning this project and your opinion, which you're certainly entitled to, that the property is not appropriately cited, and also expressing concerns about the applicability of the Connecticut Affordable Housing Appeals Act 830G. I listened carefully to that testimony. I believe that it evidences a predisposition that disqualifies you from sitting on this proceeding. Now, I cannot require you to recuse yourself. That is a decision that only the commissioner can make. But I will say that if you do participate in the proceedings, it has the potential to taint the proceeding. So ultimately, that decision is yours.
Thank you very much.
So I assume you're not going to recuse yourself?
No, I don't think I am. I'm prejudiced in any way, shape, or form. I'm very open to hearing whatever you wish to present. I have a completely open mind about the project. I haven't seen the application. I know nothing about the application. So there's no way I could have predisposed to make a judgment about the application. And as I recall, my remarks there were based on objective assessments that I don't think were prejudicial. So I respectfully decline your request.
Please note in the record, Mr. Paivo declines to recuse himself. Let's read Mr. Mahalan's memo.
Okay.
We'll start with that.
Okay. Memo to Eastlime Zoning Commission from William Mahalan, zoning official. Application of Bride Lake LLC for site plan modification to add 20 units to the Brookside Apartment Affordable Housing Development, 94 North Bride Brook Road. In their proposal, the applicant has applied to modify the existing site plan to add 20 additional units to the project. This is an 8-30G affordable housing development in which was previously approved by the commission for 80 units. The original application for a new affordable housing development, zone change, and site was approved for 2020. At that time, the application sought a permit from the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission for 108 units. This application was denied and subsequently appealed to the Superior Court, where the court overturned the denial and granted the approval of 100 units. The project is now under construction, and the initial phase has been occupied. As a result of the court's action, the applicant is seeking a site plan modification to add to the additional 20 units. Because this is a site plan modification, the zoning commission must review and approve, modify, or deny, keeping in mind that this is an 8-30G application. Further, regarding the site plan, the town's land use team reviewed the proposed and have signed off on it. The team consists of myself, Gary Geisell, the Planning Director of Wetlands Agent, Ben North, and Municipal Utilities Engineer, Bill Shear, the Deputy Public Works Director, and Eric Quinn, the Fire Marshal. They have submitted reports to my office, which are included in your packets. As the commission is aware, in an 8-30G application, the burden is on the commission based on the evidence in the record that its decision is supported by such evidence, whether in the affirmative or the negative. The applicant's attorney, Harry Heller, is here and will present the application. Move to approve. The application of Bride...
You don't need to read that. There's a for and against narrative. Suggested motion for discussion when you get there.
Oh.
I think we're on to the next item.
Okay. Do you want to take turns reading? I can read this one.
Please.
Okay. The second memo we'll have is from the Planning and Wetlands to William Mahalan, zoning official, Eastlime Zoning Commission, from Gary A. Goeschel II, Director of Planning, Inland Wetlands Agent, January 30, 2024, regarding 94 North Bride Brook Road Multifamily Development, application of Bride Lake LLC, successor to Paz and Construction LLC, applicant owner, application to modify the December 3rd, 2020 site plan approval for affordable housing identified in the application known as 94 North Bride Brook Road, Assessor Map 09.0, Lot 37-2, Eastlime, Connecticut. Information submitted by the applicant, which was considered a missed review. Application for site plan review and associated narrative of the application details. Site development plan, 10 sheet plan sat, entitled North Bride Brook MF Development Site Modification Plans Prepared for Bride Lake LLC, Sheets 1 through 10 dated 9/25/2019 and revised through 10/10/23 by Brandon J. Hanfield, PE of Yantick River Consultants LLC of 191 Norwich Avenue, Lebanon, Connecticut. A survey, property survey entitled Property Survey Land of Paz and Construction LLC, North Bride Brook Road, Eastlime, Connecticut, scale 1 inch to 60 feet, dated January 31, 2019, revised through June 8, 2020, by Robert C. Simone LS of 44 Engum Hill Road, Old Sabre, Connecticut, 06457, and Stormwater Management Report entitled Proposed Site Modifications, Brookside Apartments MF Development, 94 North Bride Brook Road, Eastlime, Connecticut, Prepared for Bride Lake LLC, dated November 1, 2019, revised November 6, 2023. This office has reviewed the above referenced information and has the following comments. One, the Eastlime Inland Wetlands Agency at their duly notice meeting of July 13, 2023, considered and voted to enter into a stipulation to judgment. See attached motion for judgment in accordance with stipulation. Two, through the stipulation of judgment, the parties to the administrative appeal, Paz and Construction LLC versus the Town of Eastlime Inland Wetlands Agency, agreed and stipulated that judgment in the appeal approving a modified plan of development may enter on certain terms and conditions. More specifically, that judgment was entered in favor of the plaintiff approving a modified plan for the development of up to 100 units of multifamily affordable housing, which shall conform to the requirements delineated on a plan entitled North Bride Brook Multifamily Development, Prepared for Paz and Construction LLC, overall layout plan, North Bride Brook Road, Assessor's Map 9, Lot 37-2, Eastlime, Connecticut, Sheet 1 of 8, date 9/25/19, revisions 11520 per town comments, an updated survey mapping 71020, revised development layout 103020 per town comments, 111720 per town comments, 52323, revised layout revised 52323, prepared by Yantick River Consultants LLC. See attached stipulation to judgment. Three, review of the modified plans submitted by the applicant indicated they conformed to the stipulation of judgment and the requirements of the approved modified plan, North Bride Brook Multifamily Development, Prepared for Paz and Construction LLC, overall layout plan, North Bride Brook Road, Assessor's Map 9, Lot 37-2, Eastlime, Connecticut, Sheet 1 of 8, date 9/25/19, revisions 11520 per town comments, an updated survey mapping 71020, revised development layout 103020 per town comments, 111720 per town comments, 52323, revised layout revised 52323, prepared by Yantick River Consultants LLC. As such, the proposed activities are non-regulated, and an inland wetlands permit is not required. We have a third memo.
Can I ask a point of information? When is it appropriate to ask for clarification on what you just read?
If Mr. Geisell was here, we could ask him. Can we finish reading the memos and then?
That's my question. My question is...
I think if we went through all the memos.
And then come back? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want Mike to read this, number three? Sure.
I have it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is from Ben North, who is Chief Operating Officer, Eastlime Water and Sewer. Good morning, and I have reviewed the site plan modification for 94 North Bride Brook Road with revision date 10/10/23 and offer the following comments to the developer. Please place the unit count with sewer capacity tabulations from Sheet 2 of 10 onto Sheet 5 of 10 Utility Plan. Please adjust water main, valving, and hydrant configuration to conform to the approved plan revision date of 3/21/22 in the southern portion of the project, especially in the areas between Buildings G and H and Buildings DE and F. The design was approved in this way to allow for isolation within the private system, to allow for the maximum number of residents to continue to enjoy utilities in the event of a main break or water service disruption. The proposed new configuration has no valving isolation and a main break in most parts of the development would cause water to be shut off for the total development, an unsatisfactory condition that could easily be avoided with a proper valve isolation design. Thank you. Ben North, etc.
We have another memo. I'll do this one. Do that one. Okay. From Eric P. Quinn, Thursday, January 18, 2024, 8:37 PM, to Jessica Loroco, William J. Bundiel, Ben North, Gary Goeschel, Bill Shear, regarding site plan modification. Good evening. The current buildings are townhouses, and if the additional buildings are also townhouses, there is no issue on our end. We would just need to see plans showing the firewalls between units and an updated site plan. Eric P. Quinn, Deputy Fire Marshal, Town of Eastlime, Fire Chief, Yantick Fire Department, Office 8607392420, Cell 86023580394, and email equin@eltownhall.com. And one more.
One more.
Mm-hmm.
On January 29, 2024, received January 29, 2024, Town of Eastlime, revised application of Bride Lake LLC, North Bride Brook Road, drawings are revised to 10/10/2023. Mr. Mahalan, the Engineering Department has been reviewed the revised application for the affordable multifamily development on North Bride Brook Road. This application is a revision to a prior approval of 80 units that was reviewed in detail in 2020 by the town engineer. This increased number of units is not a significant change from the original approval from engineering review perspective. The revised drawings and drainage report reflect the proposed modifications in building footprint, parking, and stormwater infrastructure. The Engineering Department takes no exception to the revised application as submitted. Respectfully, William Shear, P.E.L.S., Deputy Director, Public Works, Acting Town Engineer.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Mahalan, maybe you could do a recap of Mr. Geisell's memo for...
Yeah, I don't understand the reference to 100 units have been approved. Can you explain what's going on? Because that's what I'm kind of wondering.
My understanding is the Wetlands originally asked for 108 units, and I think Attorney Heller will explain that further when he passes his presentation. And they subsequently went to court. Court ruled that they could have up to 100 units. So Wetlands is essentially finished, and it now comes over to zoning. But Attorney Heller, we've probably been more ready. We'll explain it more.
Attorney Heller, if you'd like to give your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you again for the record, Harry Heller. I'd like to start by making a short presentation about the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. The Affordable Housing Appeals Act was adopted by the Connecticut Legislature in 1989, and it has been modified sequentially since then. But it was adopted in response to findings made by a Blue Ribbon Commission on Housing appointed by the then-governor of the State of Connecticut to address housing inequities within the state. And the report prepared by that commission identified the fact that housing prices and rents in Connecticut had skyrocketed, and that's in 1989, notwithstanding where they are today, that municipal zoning commissions were repeatedly using their authority to approve single-family homes on large lots, which did not provide a diversity of housing opportunities in the state of Connecticut, and essentially deprived low and moderate-income residents of the state of the ability to have affordable and adequate housing. The courts, under the law as it existed prior to the adoption of 830G, were required to give deference to the decisions of the local land use commissions and could only reverse those decisions in the event that a finding that their action was arbitrary and capricious and not based on substantial evidence in the record of the proceeding. And as a result of that scenario that was prevalent throughout the state, that lower-cost housing was being denied to the residents at large of the state. So that precipitated the adoption of the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. The essential tool given to the courts in an affordable housing application is that in any other land use application or administrative application, for that matter, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate to the court that there is not substantial evidence in the record of the proceeding to support the decision of the administrative agency. In an affordable housing appeal, that burden is reversed. The burden is on the commission based on a standard that's called sufficient evidence in the record to demonstrate that a denial of an affordable housing application was based on a... based on a material public health, safety, or welfare issue that was presented by the application. So in, and now the state goal of providing affordable housing is not only enunciated in the Affordable Housing Appeals Act, but also in the enabling legislation for zoning in Connecticut, which is Section 8-2 of the Connecticut General Statutes. And 8-2 says, "Such regulations shall also encourage the development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamily dwellings consistent with soil types, terrain, and infrastructure capacity for all residents of the municipality and the planning region in which the municipality is located. Such regulations shall also promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for both low and moderate income households." In reviewing the action of a municipal land use agency on an affordable housing application, and when I say agency, I'm talking about a zoning commission, a combined planning and zoning commission, a planning commission, or a zoning board of appeals. There are agencies that the Affordable Housing Appeals Act does not apply to. It does not apply to your municipal wetlands agency. It does not apply to your water and sewer commission. So it's targeted at zoning and actions of various boards and commissions within the municipality that are exercising zoning authority. And a denial of an affordable housing application must meet a four-pronged test, and the prongs are as follows. For each reason of denial that is enunciated by the commission and by the statute, you are required to enunciate in your decision, if you deny an affordable housing application, to enunciate with specificity the public interests that have not been satisfied by the application that has been denied. And for each reason for denial, there must be sufficient evidence existing in the record to support that determination. There must be a finding by the commission that the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interests in health, safety, or other matters which the commission may legally consider. Such public interests must clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing in the community. And such public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development. So in your decision, if you vote to deny an application for an affordable housing project, you must make a collective finding that satisfies those four prongs of 830G. So on an 830G application, whether it be for the development of housing for sale or housing for rent, the applicant is required to dedicate 30% of the housing units in the project for affordable purchasers or affordable tenants. And affordability is based on the income parameters that are established under the Connecticut State Regulations adopted under 830G. Of those 30% of the units that have to be affordable, 15% of them have to be affordable to purchasers or tenants who are at or below 60% of the lower of the statewide median income or the regional median income as published by HUD, whichever is lower. And then an additional 15% of the units in the project must be available for purchasers or tenants who are between 60 and 80% of the lower of the statewide or the regional median income. And the covenants concerning affordability must remain in place for a minimum period of 40 years. So on a for-sale project, any sale of an affordable housing unit after the developer, the purchaser must be qualified based on the income parameters, and those covenants remain in effect and govern the maximum price at which those housing units may be sold. In the application that's before you for consideration this evening, these are for-rent apartment units, and the same parameters apply, that the landlord is bound by those covenants for a period of 40 years. And those calculations have to be made on an annual basis. So you have to update the affordability plan every year based on the updated median income, household median income for the state and the region as published by HUD, and the cost of living parameters that go into the calculation of affordability. And in any affordable housing application to a municipal land use commission, the applicant is required to submit with the application a proposed affordability plan, and that plan incorporates all of the parameters that go into the determination of qualification to purchase an affordable unit, and also the calculation of the maximum sale price or the maximum rent that can be obtained by the developer or landlord for the sale or leasing of those units. So in essence, that's the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. With the application that you are considering this evening, we have submitted an amended and restated affordability plan that we represent to the commission, complies with the requirements of 830G and the Connecticut State Regulations adopted under it. With that, I'd like to take a couple of minutes and talk about the history of this project and why we are where we are this evening. I have two boards that are before you for presentation. The board on your left is the overall layout of the project as it's being presented to you this evening, which includes 100 townhouse apartment units. The plan on the right is the lot layout for the community as it exists today, as it was approved previously by your commission. When this project was formulated back in 2017 and 2018, the original formulation of the application was for 108 residential apartment affordable housing units. And an application was submitted to your municipal and the wetlands agency for approval with that lot layout and that density. At the time of the original application to the wetlands commission, the upland review area was 100 feet from the wetland boundary. And the 100-foot upland review area, as it existed at the time of the original application, is portrayed on this plan. And this boundary is set off 100 feet from the wetland limit as delineated by a soil scientist that defines the riparian corridor adjacent to an intermittent water course, which is largely carrying stormwater runoff from I-95, which abuts this property. So that intermittent water course flows through the property, and the 100-foot upland review area is offset from that. And with the formulation of the plan as it existed when we applied to the wetlands commission, not what was approved by your commission, but the 108 units, we had activities within the upland review area. In conjunction with that application, it was our belief and the belief of our professional consultants that the activities that we were proposing did not adversely impact the wetland and water course resources within the jurisdiction of the commission. The commission felt otherwise and denied the application. We appealed that denial to court. When we did so, we also reformulated the project in order to remove all activity from the upland review area. And that was the plan that we brought before your commission for approval, as it did not require wetland approval at that time. And that was the formulation of the plan that was acted on by your commission, based on the evidence in the public hearing record, approving 80 affordable housing units in 10 buildings. The other material change that has occurred since the time of the original formulation is when the sewer district was adopted by your municipal water and sewer commission, there was a sewer shed area where the public policy dictated the extension of sewers to foster development, and then there were sewer avoidance areas. And that was done back, I believe, in the '60s, Bill?
I think so.
And of course, we didn't have any of the tools that are available today through your municipal geographic information system to identify property lines and contours and things of that nature. The sewer avoidance area line came, didn't follow the property line on the north side of the property. It came down into the area that on the existing plan shows as active and passive recreation and cut through that area and then back offsite. So that eliminated the ability of the applicant to engage in the extension of municipal sewers to any units that would be located in the sewer avoidance area, because that would be contrary to the state plan of conservation and development. Since the approval of this plan, the first event that had happened is we went back to the water and sewer commission, and based on evidence that they deemed sufficient, we relocated the sewer shed line and the sewer avoidance line to the northerly property line of this parcel, which now makes, or creates the availability for dwelling units to be placed in that location, which can be served by municipal sewers. And based on the topography of this site, that area is probably the prime area because of both soil type and topography for the placement of units. So that was approved by the water and sewer commission. Then, as was read into the record earlier this evening, the second thing that happened was after the sewer shed line was moved, we had the ability to negotiate with your municipal wetlands agency to move or reconfigure the project, as depicted on the site plan that is before you for consideration this evening, moving the recreation area further to the west and placing additional units in the area which was not available for sewer units when the original project was approved in 2020. And based on the arguments that we were making in the appeal and the risk of potential loss to both parties, both the municipal wetlands agency and the applicant, we were able to negotiate a stipulated judgment for the approval of the modified plan, which continues to avoid any units being placed or any grading within the 100-foot upland review area, again, as it existed at the time of the original application. And that was approved by your municipal wetlands agency in a public meeting, and it was thereafter approved by the Connecticut Superior Court under the procedures required by Section 8-8N of the Connecticut General Statutes, which requires all settlements of municipal land use appeals to be reviewed by the court, to be deemed reasonable, and to have been approved by the municipal agency after a public meeting. So that's how we have arrived at where we are today. The 100-unit configuration, which is presented for consideration, is consistent with both the revision of the sewer shed line by your municipal water and sewer commission and the stipulated judgment entered into by your municipal wetlands agency. Now, when the original project was formulated by Brandon Hanfield, who is here this evening and will testify, it was designed in accordance with the requirements of the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual promulgated by DEE, which requires renovation of all stormwater runoff on projects in the state of Connecticut. So in the southeasterly corner of the site, as depicted on both the original plan and the modified plan, there are stratified drift deposits, which is a very coarse gravel and is a wonderful soil for the infiltration of stormwater. And the soils in that area of the site are different from the rest of the site, where you don't have those very coarse sand and grabs. So it represents a unique area for the treatment of the stormwater from this project. So under both formulations, the stormwater management system has been designed with a closed drainage system to pick up the stormwater runoff from impervious areas. And in limited areas where you cannot pick up the stormwater runoff from the impervious areas or from the grass areas, he has incorporated a series of rain gardens into the stormwater management vernacular in order to treat the runoff that's not getting into the closed drainage system and infiltrate it back into the ground and treat the water quality body. But with respect to all of the impervious areas that will be picked up in a closed drainage system, it will pass through a series of catch basins and manholes and be transmitted eventually through a couple of runs to the southeasterly corner of the site, where there is a sophisticated stormwater management system. There are two sediment forbays where water will be introduced from the stormwater system, and you can see that there are stone berms separating that from the infiltration area. So the stormwater goes into the sediment forbays, where it attains residency time before it is filtered through the berms into the infiltration area, where the soils are sufficient to allow that water, certainly the water quality volume, to infiltrate into the ground rather than be discharged in a point source discharge. And based on the engineering review that was conducted when the original application was formulated and presented to your commission, minimum separating distance between the bottom of the basin and the groundwater of three feet has been maintained throughout the basin. During design storm events, water will overtop that structure. Again, the water quality volume will never overtop it. The water quality. The water quality volume is one inch of rainfall, which represents more than 90% of the rainfall in our region. So, but in design storm events, like we've had several of over the last couple of months, that will overtop and it goes into the detention basin. The detention basin also has stratified, it's stratified drift base and is going to accommodate infiltration. But in large storm events, that basin will fill up, and there is an outlet structure which has a series of orifices in it, and those orifices meter out stormwater at a controlled rate, so that during all design storm events up to the 100-year storm event, we are decreasing the peak, or not increasing the peak rate of runoff as a result of the development of this project. So all of the stormwater is treated in accordance with the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual, and based on those methodologies that have been incorporated into the project design, the discharge of stormwater from the project will be a clean discharge and renovated in accordance with DEEP standards. Now, as I indicated, the original approval from this commission, which is currently under construction, and when you look at the current plan, the buildings that are in the lighter gray are constructed and occupied, and these are under construction. The darker ones are the proposed next phases of the development. And as you can see, not only have we increased unit count from 80 to 100 in the revised plan, but we've also revised the orientation of buildings in order to take advantage of better developable area on the site where we can develop with less impact. So the original formulation was in 10 buildings. The revised formulation of the project is 11 buildings, and some of the buildings have been lengthened and reoriented, resulting in the increase of 20 units. When we met with your zoning official to review his comments concerning the proposal, the question was raised concerning the calculation of the parking spaces for the project. Because this is an 830G application, we are not required to comply with the bulk requirements contained in your zoning regulations. That's relief that 830G specifically provides. However, on the matter of parking, we have complied. These are townhouse units, so we have a garage for every unit. So those garages count as one parking space. Your regulations require two parking spaces per dwelling unit for any two-bedroom or greater unit. And then they require an additional one parking space for every three units, regardless of the number of bedrooms. So there's a parking table in the plan, and I believe the calculation requires 234 spaces and seven handicap accessible spaces, and the plan as presented provides 250. So we are actually in compliance with that bulk requirement contained in your regulations. We have also presented a lighting plan that was presented in accordance with a requirement of the original application, and this has been updated, Brandon? Okay. So I'm going to submit into the record an updated lighting plan, and the purpose of this is to demonstrate that we do not have light migration off of this site. So all of the lighting that's proposed in accordance with the fixtures-
Thank you.
-that are depicted on the site development plan are downlighting fixtures. This plan demonstrates the lumens that exist on the ground when those lights are on, and a review of this plan evidences the fact that at the project boundaries, we do not have light migration off of the site. And I would just point out that the carve-out in the middle that's shown is now formerly Geraldine Zaluzki is now owned by Bridle Lake LLC. So that is in common ownership with the applicant for this project. Also, at our meeting with Mr. Mulholland- He made a request that we're not required to do, but we have agreed to do because we think it'll improve the project and it'll improve the streetscape along North Bridebrook Road. We have committed to creating a landscape berm. It'll be about a two-foot-high berm along the project frontage and to plant that with six-foot evergreen trees. And if the commission sees fit to approve this modification, we would say that should be incorporated as a condition of approval. The application is an application for a modification of an existing zone, well, not the zone change. You approved the zone change when the 2020 plan was approved. So the zone change for affordable housing has landed on the entire 20-acre parcel. So that's not part of this application, but it was part of the original application. And that zone change incorporated certain bulk parameters that we specified both on the site development plan and in the affordability plan that are now part of the vernacular of that zone. Even though you have affordable housing zones or an affordable housing zone in your municipal zoning regulations, under the Connecticut Affordable Housing Appeals Act, an applicant is not required to develop in accordance with those regulations, and he can submit his own set of bulk requirements in conjunction with a site plan application. And that's what we did when we submitted the prior application, and that was what was approved by the commission. So we're now requesting that the commission modify the original approval to allow for the additional 20 units that are being proposed. In considering the parameters that you are legally permitted to consider, I would submit to you that stormwater has already been approved. The design that was approved for the 2020 application was designed for 108 units, which was oversized for the development as it was approved at that time. And that design and the treatment of the stormwater continues to comply with the additional units that are proposed in conjunction with this application. The one parameter that you are, in my opinion, authorized to consider that is different from the original project is the traffic generation. Certainly, traffic is a matter that affects public health, safety, and welfare and is within the scope of matters that a municipal zoning commission can consider. In conjunction with the 2020 application, our client had had a traffic investigation prepared by Bubaris Traffic Associates, a consulting traffic engineer. And the project that was evaluated by Mr. Bubaris in conjunction with that engagement was for a 250-unit project, which was a mix of both apartment units and condominiums. And there is a report that I'll submit into the record, although it's probably already part of the record. Because this is a modification of an existing site plan approval, the underlying record from 2020 is part of the record of this proceeding. But in his report for 250 units, Mr. Bubaris concludes as follows: "It is the professional opinion of Bubaris Traffic Associates that the proposed residential development at 90 North Bridebrook Road, consisting of about 250 low-rise multifamily residential units, should not adversely impact traffic operations on the surrounding roadway network when it is completed and occupied. The proposed residential development is expected to generate from 98 to 130 trips per hour during the weekday AM and PM commuter peak periods. Operational analyses indicate that the proposed development will experience excellent levels of service at the proposed site-drive intersection, given the relatively low traffic volumes on North Bridebrook Road. It appears that the required sightlines to and from the proposed site-drive intersection can be provided, given our preliminary field view. The traffic-crash experience for the immediate study area is excellent, with no reason to expect that the subject development will exacerbate this excellent condition." That was his professional opinion for 250 units. When we presented the application for the 80 units for consideration in 2020, we had Mr. Bubaris update his report. It came to the same conclusion, but in doing so, he determined that the AM peak traffic generated from this project would be 37 trips per hour and the PM peak traffic generation would be 45 trips per hour. And based on his traffic counts taken by automatic recorder of traffic on North Bridebrook Road, he determined that the existing traffic pattern was interspersed relatively equally in an easterly and westerly direction. So he applied that increased traffic based on the same traffic pattern as the background traffic. By adding 20 units to this project, we will be increasing the AM peak from 37 trips by nine to 46 trips, and the PM peak of 45 trips by 11 to 56 trips. Based on the de minimis amount of increase and the fact that Mr. Bubaris had also evaluated a much higher traffic load on the highway network, we submit to the commission that this increase of 20 units will have no adverse impact on traffic and will have no adverse impact on any of the matters that this commission is legally allowed to consider under an 830G application. That concludes my presentation. Brandon, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, so we'll be glad to entertain any questions the commission may have.
Anybody?
No.
No question?
How many children do you expect to live in this unit area?
You won't believe this, but the current statistic for a multi, a two-bedroom multifamily in Connecticut is .2 percent, a .2 school-age child for a two-bedroom. Now, we have some three-bedrooms in this project, so I can't tell you exactly what the number is for three. I'm sure it's going to be higher, but my guess would be you're probably going to have maybe 30?
100 units plus will have 30 children. Well, I don't see anywhere on here a bus stop for the 30 children, nor I think that active and passive recreation is now a building. So is there a playground here that I'm not seeing?
Yes, we moved the recreation area out of this area here up into this area, and it's noted on the plan that this area is dedicated for active and passive recreation.
So you're not going to put in slide swings, pickled wildfords?
No.
Just asking.
No, and there's a reason for that. All of those things that you mentioned have liability issues, and it's the same reason that in any condominium project you see now, if it has a swimming pool, they've taken the diving boards out, because there are serious liability issues with those types of improvements if they're not properly monitored.
And is there fencing around the basins?
No, and is it required? You want to identify yourself?
For the record, Brandon Hanfield, professional engineer with Yantuck River Consultants, licensed in the state of Connecticut. We're not proposing any fencing around. The basin is currently proposed. We are proposing some plantings around it. In general, we have three-to-one gradual slopes, and we show that it's a very temporary impoundment that goes right down. So we don't have super steep slopes into it. The depth, I believe, is ranging from three to four feet in terms of the depth of the water, which is not very deep. It's not a deep basin. It's broad, so we keep the bottom above the groundwater, provide our infiltration, and not have too deep of an area. So currently, there is no fence around it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. When I heard about that area in the runoff, and I heard one inch, and yet it feels to me like in the past few months, we've had three to four inches of rain, and I don't see that, you know, what if that doesn't let up, and what if that's our new norm, and is it going to handle?
Well, it will handle up to the 100-year storm, which I think is about, currently about 7.8 inches in a 24-hour base period. What I was talking about is the water quality volume. When you have rainfall, it's that first flush that is your dirtiest water, and that's the water that the Stormwater Quality Manual requires you to treat and to renovate. So those sediment four bays and the infiltration basin has been designed to fully infiltrate that one inch. But that's just for stormwater quality. That's not for stormwater management.
I have in different memos where it says to adjust the water main valving, et cetera. The builders prepared to do everything that was asked in the memos.
That, that's a Brandon question.
Okay.
Again, Brandon Hanfield, for the record, yes. Incorporating the valving is not a problem. We received the comment, and adjusting the valving to isolate, just as a point, is all of the services that go to the buildings do have valves on them, so there are smaller service main that goes to each building. Each unit is served by its own service that also has a curb stop on it currently. So there's a lot of mechanism in place to isolate not only the main, but the secondary main that serves the building as well as each unit. So there's a lot of repetitive measures in there. Incorporating a few more is good advice, and we certainly will incorporate that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
Good.
Go ahead, yeah?
Would you answer, please, the question about the bus stop? Did you? I didn't hear.
I didn't answer it, no.
Somebody, could somebody answer it?
Brandon, Brandon can answer.
As it, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure-
It's not- It's not on the plan. That I can answer.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's a bus route on that road either, but they could change, they can always change the bus.
Sure.
So I'm just curious. So there's no provision for bus stop?
Currently, no. Can we accommodate?
So there's a couple of ways to come at it. If the school bus is allowed to come on the site, which I can't say they will be, because typically they won't go on a private site or sometimes even a dead-end road. The Board of Education or whoever controls the school buses determines where that school bus stops. It's likely at the end of the road. We do have internal sidewalk networks that connect internally, but if they stop at the end of the road, that's where the kids will have to be picked up. But there is no bus stop formally down there.
Right. Okay. I have some more questions.
Sure.
If I may. So it's my understanding, I think you did a nice job summarizing, you know.
Thank you.
And so we have to think about public interests, and then how they can be weighed against, or do they outweigh, clearly outweigh, the need for affordable housing?
Correct.
So I have a question about the need for affordable housing, and I have more questions about the public interests related. And you've already been, we've been talking about several of these public interest issues already, which I appreciate. So first of all, can you tell me for the affordable units, if you know, what the rents are that, you know, if.
Yeah.
Currently being charged?
Yeah, it's part of the record.
We have never seen the record, so I'm sorry for that. Maybe I can simplify the question. So you don't have to look through your documents quite as much?
No.
Okay.
Now, I cannot represent that this is what's currently being charged, because this was just updated in October, and we tenanted some of the units before October, so some of them may be lower currently.
Okay.
But this, because the, every year you get new.
Right.
The new median income standard, so it's a moving target. But for the next year, on a going-forward basis, for a 60% unit, it's 1,266.05. And for an 80% unit, it's 1,946.
Oh, I should say, and I'm really not sure how I'm supposed to say this, but Mr. Zamarka said that we're supposed to declare if we have expertise, and I don't really quite understand what that means, but if we don't declare we have expertise, then that's some kind of a problem?
It is a problem, yes.
So I'd like to declare I have some expertise. Now, do I need to specify?
Yes, you should.
Okay. So I'm a professor emeritus of urban planning and real estate development, and in the courses I taught for 35 years included lectures and chapters and content on site planning, and I've worked on multifamily and affordable housing projects before.
Okay.
Okay, that's my expertise. So I'd just like to say for the record that our, we have a 2022 Affordable Housing Plan that the town adopted, and in that plan, it says that we have more rentals than we need in the table on need, housing needs. We have more than we need in the 625 to 875 per month range, and, but what we really need and where we actually are deficient is in the units renting for less than 625, which is for people earning $25,000 and less, which sounds like it's considerably lower than the need than what's being provided in this project.
Well, that's subsidized housing.
Yeah, that's what I was asking you, is the, what's the rent?
This is, this is.
Oh, I see what you're pointing.
Yeah, this is a privately developed.
Right.
Set-aside development.
Yeah.
Under 830G.
Right.
There's also subsidizing housing, subsidized housing with governmental subsidies that qualifies under 830G.
Right.
But this isn't that product.
So this project isn't pursuant to our Affordable Housing Plan, meaning any of our housing need as specified in that plan. So I just wanted to.
Correct.
Make that statement in the record, so that it's there.
But it.
It wouldn't be feasible, or it's not required under 830G.
No, I mean.
I understand that.
With your expertise, I'm sure you're familiar with what the cost to construct is.
Of course, yeah.
So it cannot be done without subsidies.
I understand that, yeah. So that's one thing. Okay, so then, now with respect to the substantial, or the, you know, substantial public interest issues, so first of all, we're clear now that there's no playground area. Is that correct?
There's no improved playground, improved playground area.
Okay, okay. So I, there are in Gateway Commons, I'd just like to point that out, there's several of them. So it's not like it's infeasible to be provided. So I think that with 30 kids, it would be good to have that, and to make it appropriate and livable, and a safe place for the kids to play, otherwise they're going to end up playing in the parking lot or on the street and so forth. Okay, so as you know, so at first issue I want to bring up is the visuals, and I'm glad to hear that, Bill, you've been talking to them about the view from the road, because that's probably the most common comment I hear about the project, is that since it was built, you know, that whole road is zoned rural from all the way up at Boston Post Road to approximately a quarter mile past the project location, and it's a very, you know, well-respected, well-appreciated rural scenic farm road. And so a lot of folks, when they see the project, they consider it to be incompatible with the character of the zoning that it's embedded in, and so they're, you know, not surprisingly taken aback when they see it. And so now we're being asked to expand the scale of the project, thus increasing that visual presence or impact. And so I think, and what I've noticed is that you've got, you know, dense screening on the edges, but not along the road. It's very prominent along the road. And so I'd like you to, I'm glad, I do want us to accept the idea of having the berms and the trees, but I think that rather than, I'd like the trees to be 10 feet on center, for example, not just, you know, as sparsely spread out, and I want them to not be, you said six foot, I think, they should be 12 foot.
That, I'll tell you right now, we're not going to agree to that.
Well.
There's an exponential difference.
It would probably cost $10,000, $15,000, and the total project is, what, 20 million, 25, 30 million?
It would cost.
So it's a very small.
It would cost more than that.
To, well, perhaps so, but maybe.
If they're available.
Yeah, I've looked them up, I think they're available. But, so I think that getting the biggest possible specimens in there, because otherwise it'll take years for that. And so I think that, and I would, I'm not sure that would be the only option, there may be other options for, it doesn't have to be along the road per se, it could be in front of the project.
Before you go too far, we have appellate-level decisions in the state of Connecticut saying that aesthetics are not a matter within the consideration of a zoning commission on an 830G application.
Well, this is a matter of the compatibility of the land use with the neighboring uses.
That, compatibility with neighboring uses.
Yeah.
Is not a legitimate matter under consideration for the commission, and again, there's appellate-level law on that.
Well, okay, I haven't read that, but I do think that we should be aware of the fact that the visual character of the road and affects the property values.
I don't disagree with that, and that's why we agreed to.
I'm a little surprised to hear that, but we'll have to take that up with our county attorney and make sure that's clear. That's a requirement. My next area has to do with the stormwater, okay? So is it true that you're no longer using the geotextile filtration system that was in the original?
Correct. They were not available because of supply chain issues when that basin was built, and I'll let Brandon discuss how he redesigned it.
Okay. Well, let me ask a couple of questions connected with that. Number one is, is the new, for Brandon.
Yeah.
So you can just answer them all at once. Will the new system produce the same level of water quality treatment for the discharged water so that the watershed is protected? That's the first, as the geotextile system would have.
Sure.
That's one question. The second question is that, I'm sure you've been reading the 2023, or is it the 2024 Water Quality Manual, the new Water Quality Manual that has come out, and it takes effect this month, I think? And that has increased the water quality storm to 1.3 inches.
Correct.
Right? And then it also says that because of the projected and experienced increase in the size of storms that everybody's been experiencing, it says that when designing stormwater management measures, proponents should consider the use of greater design storm rainfall depths in excess of the current NOAA Atlas 14 median values, which I think you used in the original, you or your colleague used in the original plan. To account for projected future increases in extreme precipitation, future precipitation estimates should be based on the latest climate change projections for Connecticut, and a planning horizon corresponding to a minimum 50-year service life for the proposed stormwater infrastructure. So what I'm concerned about is while we're adding additional impervious surface and then therefore, you know, water quantity to the system, are we also, have we also calculated yet the effect of increasing to a 1.3 water quality storm, and also the fact that a roughly 30% increase in the quantity of water from the 100-year, from the different storms is going to occur? Have you analyzed that, and have we seen the effects of that on the hydrographs and so forth?
All right. Those two, okay.
Yeah, you think you're.
There's a lot to unpack, but I'll start with the first one.
Yeah.
The change from the underground system, which had incorporated into it two folds. One, the water came into an isolator rope, which is basically an underground chamber wrapped in two styles of filter fabric that collects the stormwater, allows it to increase within that chamber and filter through the geotextile before it goes into the chambers that are not wrapped. It's backfilled with clean stone, fills up, and then it discharged into this open basin that we originally had. As Attorney Heller said, 2020, 2021, there were serious supply issues with any plastic product, specifically the storm tech infiltrators, they were very hard to get, if you could get them at all. We went back and did more of an open-style treatment system where we, the initial flush comes into two sediment four bays, the recommended volume within those four bays is 10% of the water quality volume. Each of those basins is at least 20%. I'd have to look at my numbers here, but the sediment four bays equal 34% of the water quality volume that's calculated for the site. So those sediment four bays hold three times the recommended amount for a sediment four bay. So the water goes into them, it resides in those, the sediments fall out, they filter through the filter berms that we show, and what we did is we, from there, we added a retainer cell. So as they filter through the stone, same exact method that an underground chamber uses, which is, again, a void surrounded by stone, in this case, it filters through the stone into a retainer chamber that has another 3,000 cubic feet or 20% of the water quality volume. So within the two sediment four bays and our retainer cell, which will be planted with native species and seed, we have over 56% holding of the water quality volume under the 2004 guidelines or manual. From that retainer cell, it then filters into the detention basin. That detention basin, on the bottom of it, it has a filter bed structure, and that filter bed structure is constructed of, I believe it's 18 inches of a minimum of 50% sand, 30% topsoil, 20% mulch. That is an engineered soil that allows for treatment as it infiltrates through, and below that are those very good sands and gravels that we witnessed in our soil testing. So as it filters into our detention basin, which we held 56% of the water quality volume, the remainder of the water quality volume is held within our filter bed that soaks through the engineered soil into the soils below. You'll see in the report that I submitted, the filter bed itself, it holds an additional 36% of the water quality volumes, we're at 90-plus percent just retainage, not considering infiltration as it's occurring, and it treats 250% of the water quality flow. So as it's infiltrating through at a reasonable rate of 3.5 feet per day, it is treating 250% of the water quality flow. So not only are we holding the volume, we're also passing it through a media that treats 100% or more than 100% of our calculated water quality flow. So we have two, we're coming at it from two angles. And I'll say, I always design stormwater very conservatively. It's not worth living on the margins, as we've seen with these big storms. So I think that leads into your next question, the increases shown in the 2024 manual.
The 1.3.
Yeah, I believe that it's any, there's a grace period on that. So it's, I believe, March 2024, it will be active. Any project submitted after March will have to meet it. There is a grace period of projects that started or were over 50% designed at the time, it is active. So this project, obviously, was started well before it, we submitted well before it. So we designed to the 2004, but I am aware of the 2024 guidelines. They're not specific in our calculations, because that wouldn't be appropriate, but I can say, as I said before, my hydraulic analysis and hydrologic analysis is very conservative. So I count for every piece of imperviousness, I did not account for the rangers in my study. I do not account for any areas where we do disconnect impervious surfaces, so you're allowed to reduce what impervious would be when you disconnect them directly from a drainage system.
Right.
So all of those measures, which make you live on the margins of the one inch, I do not account for in my study. Existing conditions, I consider the whole place to be very well-forested, I don't consider any areas that might not be. I use the highest levels of the hydrologic soil group for existing conditions to make sure of maximizing how much water the existing site can receive. So when I apply my proposed analysis against it, I am designing to the lowest amount of flow that came off, and I have to meet that or be lower than it. And you'll see in the calculations, for a one-year storm, I calculated three tenths of a cubic foot per second coming off the existing site towards North Bridebrook Road, almost an amount of flow you can't even see. Coming out of our basin or our pond in the proposed conditions is two tenths. So in the one-year storm, which is about, I want to say about three inches of rain, we have two tenths of a CFS coming out of our basin, and that is using a very conservative exfiltration rate at the bottom of our basin. So we're reducing the amount of flow entering the North Bridebrook Road corridor from existing, a very conservative analysis of existing, to a very realistic analysis of proposed, and we're still lowering the amount of flow getting there. And that applies all the way through to the 100-year storm, where existing conditions we had around 15, proposed conditions, we have 10. So we're actually receiving and holding more water than we have to within that basin. Again, it's not worth living on the margins.
Yeah.
So we are still overdesigned in the capacity of it, and we can hold more storms, but we don't analyze it.
The numbers you're giving are from the original stormwater report, yeah?
No, the new one.
The new one?
Correct.
You just, so you just haven't added, you haven't done the 1.3, you haven't done a more, you say you're exceeding, you're just not, I'm not quite clear whether you're not, you're confident that you'd hold and treat the future storms, which are going to be 30% or so bigger, you know, than the ones we're experiencing now. I know you don't have to take that into consideration, but kind of, everything's out the window when it comes to 830G, you don't have to do anything. We just have to talk about things that are in the public interest.
Right.
And this is one of those things, it's clearly in the public interest, especially when we have a quarter million alewives, you know, spawning in the lake right across there in that watershed. So I just wanted to be clear whether you really think we are or aren't going to capture and hold the storms that we're going to be seeing in the next 10, 20, up to 50 years in your professional opinion.
In my professional opinion, my calculations meet the current design guidelines for the 2004 DEP Water Quality Manual.
Okay.
I am aware of the 2024.
So you don't know, is what you're saying to the other.
I have not performed calculations in accordance with the manual that has not been officially released for study use.
That's what I was inferring, I just want to be clear that that's what I'm.
Yeah, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to submit calculations based on a manual that's not active.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I have one other subject regarding sidewalks that I'd like to talk about. I don't know if that's, which of the gentlemen would like to take my question?
What do you have?
What's the question? Yeah, happy to answer a question.
I'll just put it out there.
Sure.
So what I've noticed is that, at least, you know, in looking at the site plan as best I can, I don't see any sidewalks anywhere provided, certainly not on any of the second streets nor on the main ones. I know it came up earlier this evening. And I'm wondering if I'm missing something there? Because this is a safety issue for the 30 kids and the families that are going to be living there and everybody else that's going to be living there. Every year, 5,000 children are harmed in parking environments, and a couple of hundred of them are killed in that situation. And as a result of that, the state of Connecticut, which has a set of site planning guidelines that they use for, it's the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, it's not, in my opinion, it's the state's guidelines for this, which I know doesn't apply, isn't required of this project per se, but it is a professional set of guidance to be considered. Says pedestrian routes and recreation areas shall be separated from vehicular ways to the fullest extent possible so as to provide safety to the inhabitants. And that goes double around parking. That's my additional comment. So I'm wondering if there are sidewalks that are going to be connecting all the different units to the main road and up to the recreation area and so forth around the side? I didn't see any on the site plan.
There are no sidewalks that connect all of the units together or go down to North Bridebrook Road. The sidewalks that are proposed in the plan get parking areas, specifically handicapped-accessible parking areas to the handicapped-accessible units.
I see. Okay.
So in the way this is laid out, we tried to minimize grading on this site.
Uh huh.
So obviously, the tiered approach with the buildings and the road allowed us to do that. And once you get into the parking areas for each building, the, so there's the garage on the low side.
Yeah.
Living units are above on the second floor facing the other direction. We propose parking on the high side, and on that high side, we have the handicapped-accessible spaces, and we have sidewalks leading into the back
Yeah.
of the handicapped-accessible units.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in this case, the sidewalks are functional for accessibility.
Yeah.
In terms of circulation through the site, where there are other amenities, mailrooms or passive playground areas, we do provide handicapped-accessible parking spaces in close proximity to those resources so that there is a way to, for anyone to access those amenities. But in terms of connecting it, the slight slopes alone, the roadway itself exceeds, generally exceeds what would be considered a handicap ramp. So the roadway that comes up has 8% slopes, 9% slopes, 7% slope. So that would be considered a handicap ramp. We are looking at this like a road. So roads that are steep can have sidewalks next to them, but they're not accessible. So we did not feel like it was suitable to connect the amenities for accessible route because we couldn't do that due to slope. So we provided the handicap spaces and sidewalks at each of those amenities.
Yeah, I wasn't just talking about accessible for handicap, I was just talking about connectivity and accessibility via sidewalks for the residents and their visitors throughout the project. And it seems to be deficient in that regard, and I think, I consider that a safety issue. I do think that if you were interested, I'd like to see you consider adding them. And I think it could be done by saving money and saving impervious surface in other ways. In particular, I think the 24-foot wide roads, which I saw in the site plan, if I'm correct, is wider than they need to be if you give consideration to things like the National Association of Transportation officials, American Association of State Highways. There's this idea of yield streets, which is basically streets that allow, that are narrower and that are allowed, that are designed to have sidewalks and pedestrian space there as well as enough space, like 18 feet or so, for two-way passing of cars going very slowly, very low volume in these secondary. And while we're talking about that, I think you really have way overdesigned for parking, notwithstanding the local parking standards desire to satisfy whoever thinks those are important. The ITE Parking Generation Manual, the fifth edition, the sixth one is just out now and is probably a tiny bit different from this. But if you take into consideration garden apartments, not near transit, in rural suburban or in suburban settings that are low-rise, that are two bedrooms, that are affordable, a mix of affordable, so you take that all, throw that all together, and you really come up with like one and a quarter parking spaces needed for a two-bedroom unit, not the two. And so you're way overparked, and if you could get closer to the standard, which is really all that is needed, that, not so much the standard, the actual demand, you could save millions of dollars that way, lots of impervious surface, and probably makes room for and money for the sidewalk solution. So that would be a way to get around, to get at this problem if, but I'm quite concerned for the lack of parking. I just want, I mean, I'm sorry, the sidewalk thing. And ultimately, we're on a path to try to reduce impervious surface in our watersheds, and overparking is one of the classic culprits for that problem. Do you wish to comment on that?
I do, because I disagree with you as someone that owns over 100 units of multifamily myself. It may be slightly overparked, but we have older projects with deficiencies in our parking, and we find that we need at least two per unit.
Well, I'm just basing this on the survey research that's done by the Institute for Transportation Engineers.
I'm telling you on real-life experience as a landlord.
These are based on real-life survey work where they go and look at hundreds of actual projects like the one you own.
They're based on theorists.
No, they're not. They're based on actual field observations of what's going on. They go out and they count these and the occupation at the peak hours, like Saturday morning at 3:00 in the morning or whatever they do. It's not theoretical.
It's not.
It's not theoretical.
It's not in an area like this, where you have better public transportation, maybe the, those statistics bear more fruit, but where.
They have a separate category for that.
We have some other questions.
I have, can you wrap this up? I have some legitimate questions since I sat a town hall on Monday morning and looked at the plant list. You have essentially created a buffet for deer. I'm sorry, 78 arbivores are variety five to six foot that will be replaced after a year by the developer, which are going to then be eaten and then.
I'm happy to answer it.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure. For the record, Brandon Handfield, engineer. The arbivory we're specifying on the plan is a Green Giant, which is a Tuja X. That's a Western variety of the arbivory, which is considered deer, or deer don't like it. So the Eastern varieties, the Occidentalis, are a buffet for deer. They typically have along the roadside, you'll see them kind of scalped up about six feet. The Green Giant variety that you're seeing in a lot of developments now do not get eaten by deer because of their Western variety. So that's what we're specifying. I have a number of projects where that specific plant is highly successful. I have not seen any scalping whatsoever. They grow very fast, so they're very fast-growing. They can grow up to 40, 50 feet. They get, they can get out to about 15 feet wide. So they're a very good plant for what we're doing here, which is screening, visual screening. So they create a nice hedge row that doesn't get eaten up six feet like we're used to seeing on the Occidentalis.
I really don't want to see the lollipops once the developers have finished.
I completely agree, and we try not to propose that Eastern species of arbivory unless it's very close to a building and not somewhere where a deer be apt to come. So we're proposing that Western variety for that purpose.
And I noticed on your tree sizes are listed as two to three inch. In the nursery trade, they're two to two and a half, two and a half to three. And I would hate to think that the developer is saving a boatload of money by just putting in two trees instead of three-inch trees.
I'd have to look. So that would apply to the deciduous trees, I believe. We gave heights on, so on the Green Giant, we put, we have a five to six-foot species specified for the screening trees. So that's based on the height that they come within the containers.
What kind of legend?
On the legend, yes, the planting schedule?
Yes.
Yes.
On this side.
So the trees themselves, the maples, we have a two-inch to three-inch caliper.
Right. But maples are sold as two to two and a half and two and a half to three.
Yeah.
So I'm sure there's developers out there, of course, wouldn't be you, that would put in two-inch subsized trees instead of three-inch large trees.
Right.
And there's a significant dollar difference between the two sizes. And I would like to know what size you're going to put in, that you're going to honor what you say you will put in. And while we're on the subject, pollinators.
Mm-hmm.
Very few, very few native plants included in these plantings and a lot of hostas. And deer love hosta.
They do. They do.
All I'm saying is if this is supposedly aesthetically pleasing with a cost, I'm sure there's cost to everything, I wouldn't like the town to be used in any way.
Yeah.
And I would respectfully request that you go back to your landscape person and ask them to redo it, including native pollinators, please.
The one item I'll speak to on the native plants is really the intent of the surrounding area and using native grass seed mixes that are conservation mixes. So New England wetland plants is a species of seed mix I've used quite a bit. It has all of those species in it along with very deep-rooted grasses. So it's a combination of native plants, native flowers, as well as native shrubs or native grasses. We're proposing that anywhere up the front, so where we have the detention basin, around the detention basin, within the retainer cell. And then around the perimeter of the site, it's really, we're proposing a no-mow grass so that it's maintenance-free, pesticide-free to allow the natural plants.
I get all that. I just don't see any flowers.
I think we're showing that within the cedar beds and.
No, 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 no. Grassy, grass is grass is grass. I know, there's a million species of it, and one of the guys in the audience here is his masters in grasses.
Right.
So grasses are off the table, but I don't see any flowering plants that meet the natural quality that we just
Again.
adopted, what, unless.
Again, for the record, Harry Heller, we can talk all you want about pollinators and aesthetics, but those are not legitimate matters for consideration by the commission on an 830G application. Now, I'm not going to say that it may not enhance the project, I'm sure it will, but the legislation and the courts in interpreting that legislation have defined the permissible parameters of inquiry and requirements for a zoning commission, and aesthetics are not one of them.
Well, that's kind of too bad, isn't it? So sucks for the poor people that have to live there who make more money than I do. They have to look at.
Look, I'm not judgmental, I'm just telling you what the law is.
Then if that's, why are you doing the berm in the trees if aesthetics are off the table?
Can you answer that question if I may?
Sure.
I asked them to consider going back and looking at the previously approved plan and looking at the aesthetics along the road.
Exactly.
And so what we concluded is in a discussion
Uh huh.
was that I had requested perhaps as a resolution and to try to soften the project from the street, we do a two-foot berm. Originally looked at a little taller, but in discussion, we concluded the two-foot berm, if I can, and if we only put six trees, I'm starting at eight feet. So that was the solution, to try to soften it at my request as staff, to try to improve the visuals along the road. Well, it's technically not part of this hearing. Sometimes during staff meetings, we will throw out different things that we think might benefit everyone. So that was something that I put out in a meeting with them and based on their testimony today is something they've considered.
Thank you.
So there's a 300-foot upland review area now instead of the 100 when this started back in the beginning. So does that mean that this 100-foot area or line is grandfathered in at 100 feet, not the 300 that exists now?
Yes, because the original application that was filed with the Wetlands Commission, that the appeal resolved at the time of that application, the upland review area was 100 feet.
Okay, just checking.
Okay. Any more questions from the commission before we go to the public comments?
I have one more question. That is the traffic. So Mr. Berber has said that in the hearing, in the record from the first project, in response to a question about the intersection with the West Main and Bridebrook, which you didn't mention at all in your comments, that intersection.
Correct, because it's not in his report. But he did testify to it in the original hearing.
He said that in that hearing that when the project reaches 100 units, it's going to be, it's going to need to be reviewed by DOT. That's all I know is I read, is what I read. And I'd like to know if it's going to be, if that's the case, if Mr. Berber is correct.
The trigger for an OSTA review is 200 parking spaces or 100,000 square feet of gross floor area.
Well, maybe so, but what did he mean by 100 units when it reached 100 units?
Because 100 units generates 200 parking spaces.
Okay. So then, are they going to do that review is my question? He said there would be a review.
Yeah, I mean, that's a different permitting path that we have to follow.
So you have to get a separate permit from the state for discharge or, you know, generating traffic onto that intersection?
Yeah, because we're, can, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Clarify real quick.
Go ahead. I'm actually involved in a few projects right now through OSTA where it's over 100 units of residential housing triggers OSTA review, which is over 100. So the typical triggers are 200 parking spaces or 100,000 square feet of building area. You have to apply to the Office of the State Traffic Administrator for either administrative decision or a major traffic generator. In this case, we're at 100, they have a kind of a set aside for residential units. They say more than 100 units requires the same application at 100 units, not more than 100 units. So OSTA application would not necessarily be required for a major traffic generator for this development, but it will be reviewed for all the other parameters.
Okay. Thank you very much. One last question. Can you tell us what the total construction cost of the project is?
I don't think that has any bearing on.
Well, it's just when you're referring to things being too expensive, like, you know, more mature trees, I just try to put into context what it is that you're comparing that against. You know, $10,000, $20,000, $100,000 versus 20 million, 30 million. When it comes to the effect on the key parameter, which is the viability of the project, which is usually measured in financial terms, these things are not significant. And so I wanted to know so I could understand what the magnitude is so, because we don't want to trigger, you know, changes that might become at issue vis-à-vis the effect of the viability, because one can only appeal if there's a potential effect on the viability of the project. And so that's a legitimate concern of ours, is to avoid triggering that. So by making sure that any asks or amendments do not trigger significant change in the viability of the project through what would be traditional financial analysis in my mind. So that's why I'm asking.
That is not one of the parameters. And let me read into the record again what the four parameters are.
There's a phrase, there's a phrase regarding substantial adverse impact on viability. If there is substantial adverse impact on viability, then an appeal can be pursued. Am I wrong about that?
These are the criteria, that there is sufficient evidence in the record to support the denial.
Oh, no, that's a different section. I'm sorry, I'm talking about. Oh, no, that's a different section, I'm sorry, I'm talking about, I'm talking about in order to justify an appeal or in order to be allowed to appeal. Period, one has to say, be able to claim that there's a substantial adverse impact on viability, in other words, if there's that.
No, no, in order to appeal, an applicant has what's called an aggrievement standard under Connecticut law. And an aggrievement standard means that they have a specific personal interest in the application that is different from the interest of the public generally. That's the first prong, and the second prong is that that interest has been adversely affected by the decision of the commission. And there's also appellate level law in Connecticut that a unsuccessful property owner applicant to an administrative agency is automatically aggrieved.
Say that last one again.
Is automatically aggrieved.
Before the rest of that sentence.
An unsuccessful property owner applicant is automatically aggrieved.
Automatically.
Automatically.
So this business of substantial adverse impact on viability. Do you know what I'm referring to, that phrase?
Never heard it, and I've been doing this for almost fifty years.
I read it in the statute today, so it's there. So I just, that's why I'm asking that question, so I understand.
No, standing is based on the aggrievement standard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we.
More questions?
Okay, thank you. So we're ready to move on for public comment. So do we have comments for the project? Anyone want to speak in, in favor of the project? Does anyone want to speak against the project?
I'm neutral.
Okay, we can do neutral, thank you.
I don't want to even sound one way or the other in terms of viability or anything else. This is not a zero sum game, this is something that I think needs to be discussed in terms of a bigger picture. Could you restate? Okay, I'm sorry, Penny Howell Heller, by the way, I'm no relation. My, my husband's family is huge, I'm sure six generations back or something. And I'm speaking on behalf of the East Lime Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. We have no regulatory power, we are advisory, so I'm here advising. I'm also a biologist, retired from the Department of Environmental Protection for Fisheries. I worked for them for thirty-eight years and now chairman of the Natural Resources Commission. So I'm speaking for the larger ecosystem. And kind of repeating some of the things that we've been in front of this commission repeatedly. Once again, we're concerned and would like to express concern over the ongoing development, possible expansion of the Brookside Apartments. This project has already displaced a wooded, a wooded slope that naturally protected the adjacent Bride Lake and Bride Brook, naturally free of charge, no problem. This water course supports one of the largest spawning runs in southern New England of alewife, which is an important food fish. And it's the biggest spawning population in the state of Connecticut and has gone up to about a third of a million fish. And considering all the other tributaries in the state that have lost their spawning runs, the, the town has an obligation to protect this valuable resource. And is doing so, is doing so now. Ben North in East Line Public Works is working with the DEP staff to improve the lake water levels to accommodate expected future drought issues, that came up before, that the past is not a predictor for the future when it comes to stormwater. And it would be irresponsible for a development project adjacent to the lake to damage water quality while the town and state are spending time and money to protect and improve this remarkable natural resource. The state and public, private nonprofits are now trying to get a twenty-five million dollar grant for East, for Rocky Neck to improve Bride Brook. People probably already know all about that. During the original public hearing for this development that was held at the zoning commission in November nineteenth, twenty twenty, one of our members spoke of the importance of the alewife spawning run and the need to protect Bride Brook from pollution by this development. Unfortunately, our commission was alerted by the DEP fisheries staff at this time last year. In their opinion, muddy water was, which we saw, muddy water was entering Bride Brook via tributary passing through the apartment complex development and resulted from failed erosion control measures in the middle of the Brookside Apartment Construction Site. We are most concerned during the construction. I understand that all of these plans are in the works, but this is a long project and a lot of disturbance is going to go on. And during constructions, already one problem has been alerted. Although the inland wetlands agent, Eric Goshel intervened to remediate this incident, damage to the water course occurred, you've already had damage occurring. And could have been much worse if the state fisheries staff had not caught it during their monitoring operations, which is very periodic. So we are again asking that the stormwater plan for this development undergo further scrutiny. I understand that it's a good project, but it's a project that has to be watched because you are disturbing a natural slope that is adjacent to a very, very important town and state resource over and above the needs of, and this I think falls one of the, the four things that you have to watch out for. We need affordable housing, we need the right affordable housing, and we need it in the right place. And it's not a zero sum either or. We don't have to give up the biggest spawning population in, in southern New England in order to get twenty more units of affordable housing. So we're asking in the strongest terms that the full scope of this development be carefully reviewed in the light of past failures, especially during construction, and especially once the development is completed and the residents move in and these rain gardens are not maintained and the vegetation is not appropriate because things have changed with climate change and, and the storms are much more serious than what the statistics have shown. We're just asking for a, a lot of caution go on in this, in how this development is treated.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In your opinion, what type of erosion control is reasonable?
I like the berm idea, I think that was excellent, I think the trees, because that's what's held that slope naturally. And any, any more vegetation that can be put in, limiting the impervious surfaces, obviously, because it's not just water, it's runoff from, from the, the parking lots and any other pollution that, especially with salt.
For the construction phase?
Well, the, the thing is that there's a tributary that goes right through the middle of this and it, and it's playing, it holds runoff from the highway. And that is what really needs to be monitored because that's where the, the failure came this time last year during a winter storm. But that, it's the tributary that, that feeds into Bride Brook and Bride Lake, and it goes right around the, right through the middle.
So if we put in triple layers, ten foot spacing on hay bales, would that help hold that, the land we want to hold?
Yeah, although I'm not an engineer, he is. I'm suggesting that that be examined and carefully treated. Again, I'm just asking for caution, I don't pretend to be an engineer. I'm a fisheries biologist and I, and the muddy water that goes into a crystal lake is doing great damage to these fish.
Well, I was just trying to come up with a way that we could include fixing or at least ameliorating the problem.
I, I don't want to pretend to know how to do that.
We can ask for an analysis and ask. Can I ask a follow-up too, which is.
Yes.
The, the impact, the damage to the stream that you were referring to that was observed. It sounded to me like it was maybe physical and I'm just wondering if it.
Muddy waters, muddy waters in the wintertime.
It's, it's, it's no longer, the condition no longer exists.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, it was a short term. Well, yeah, and it happened during the spawning run.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's. It was a bad timing and a problem, which was, they, they, you know, they, they fixed it. But it was after the fact and it was. Yeah, it was siltation, I, I appreciate the fact that, that the fix was made, but the damage was done.
Attorney Heller, do you have any comments regarding this?
Yeah, again, for the record, Harry Heller, in response to that, I just want to point out, when we came to this commission, after we were denied by the wetlands commission, we had specific parameters for Brandon to design a project that did not require wetland approval. One of those parameters was that any development in the approved project as it exists today not disturb any area that sheds to that water course. Jason, who was here this evening, was aware of that, he inspected it with the wetlands official. They didn't find anything on the site that was contributing to that, nor based on the design parameters, could it have contributed to that? As I indicated earlier in my presentation, that stream accommodates outflow from the drainage system on ninety-five and it goes under ninety-five, so there are multiple other sources that may have been contributing to that. But just based on the design parameters of this project as it exists today, we were not disturbing anything that sheds towards that brook.
Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion to close this hearing? Or is there more?
I'd like to make a motion to keep it open. And, and keep the hearing open until next, until the next, next meeting or when we can have the applicant come back and propose some, some amendments that address the various issues that have been specified tonight that I think are concerning myself and other members. And that way we can keep the conversation going and, and also allow the public to comment on any, any mitigation measures that are added to the site plan. So that would be my preference, would be the.
A second to that motion? We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have two ayes, is that correct, three ayes? All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed, three to three, so it did not pass. So is there a motion to close the hearing?
I so move to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 That did not pass either?
So it's still open?
The, the hearing continues at this particular time unless you continue with motions.
Okay, so let's move on to.
Just for the record, I agree with that. We agree on something. But you have a statutory time period within which you're required to close the public hearing, so.
And Mr. Mohan, do you have that date for us?
I don't off the top of my head, but I believe it's March one, somewhere in that vicinity.
March sixth, I think.
March sixth. So we couldn't go to, you know, to that, to that. We could get to the March sixth, but on that meeting in March is the seventh and we would then need a, a an agreement for an extension of the three to five day public hearing time period. We do have another meeting in this month, in a couple of weeks, so we could, if the commission chooses to continue to that date. Attorney Heller, your team would be available on that date?
Someone will, if I'm not, someone will be available.
Thank you.
Can I ask a sort of big picture question?
Yes, please.
We've got eighty units already approved, the application's for twenty more, which basically the court has kicked back in our laps with a strong suggestion that we approve it. It would, and yet it seems like we're starting over and relitigating this entire project. I don't think that's appropriate. I, I think we're here to say yes or no to twenty more units, not rebuild a project that's essentially, that's half built already. I don't really object to continuing the public hearing, I have no problem with that, I'll vote yes next time if that'll get us, get us home tonight, but I, I think we're, I think we're going a little bit overboard here. I don't know which way this is going to go, but I mean, to start suggesting things like sidewalks and, this, this project's half built. Do we expect them to tear it up and rebuild it in favor of getting twenty more units that they're probably entitled to anyway?
You're asking a question?
No.
Okay.
No, we have heard plenty from you, thank you. If, if you guys don't object to coming back, I'll, I'll continue, I'll vote to continue the public hearing.
But it's, it's your right.
Yeah, I understand, but there has to be a reason for it.
I interrupted, the chair, I'd like to object to the decorum disparaging my participation tonight, this is out of order and inappropriate. A gentleman should be reminded that we're supposed to follow decorum when.
I, I feel like we have followed it, so moving on, we do, we have continued the hearing. Or do we need another vote? Let's, okay, someone, does someone want to move to continue the hearing again?
I move that we continue the hearing.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? It passed four to two, we'll continue the hearing.
To February fifteenth?
Pardon?
To February fifteenth. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have a lot of people in the audience this evening, and I know that there's several people who want to come and speak, unable to this evening, they'll be able to speak at the next meeting.
Okay.
And is there some way that these diagrams can be made available for the public to see?
Will they be in, on materials online?
Harry, I consider these evidence so.
They're, they're evidence, you can keep them if you like, as long as we bring them to the next meeting, but they're, they're already in the record.
We can put them on the town website under materials, they're here in the office if someone wants to see them. At this point, would Mr. Peck like to be receded so we can review the minutes? Okay, has everyone read the minutes?
Yes.
Excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen, excuse me. I'm sorry, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes noting the typo? It was written, I think, January eighteenth instead of January sixteenth in a couple places.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? It passed six zero zero. Since we're continuing the hearing and because of the time tonight, I think we'll have time for discussion on the next meeting. So we can move on to old business. The Subcommittee for Outdoor Lighting.
No reporting this time.
You haven't, I haven't met yet.
You haven't met yet, no.
Okay, but you're planning to, okay, thank you. Mr. Peck, you, we're talking about looking at a text amendment for mixed use in the CA zone. How's that coming?
We haven't met on that either. I was going to talk to Mr. Mohan about that.
Okay.
And then I'd be glad to talk to it, talk about it here or at a future meeting. Just to get a consensus before we dig into it.
Okay.
I, I never really got consensus, you listened, but I didn't hear any feedback whether that might be a good thing to pursue, I think it, I think it is. At least good to talk about.
Well, maybe under new business, we can talk about it some more here. The affordable housing, I think there's a lot of people wanting to discuss that. We're actually just waiting for Attorney Blistdale. We're actually just waiting for Attorney Bleesdale. He should have his findings sometime in March. I think he got a late start. He was waiting for information from Mr. Geisell, but now that he has that, we're looking at wrapping that up by the end of March and having everyone participate in a good discussion on that one. New business, we will have coming up, the application of Kristen Clark, PE for conceptual site plan approval for an age-restricted affordable housing rental community per Connecticut General Statute 830G.
I'll schedule that, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Can I ask the location?
I believe.
On Post and Post Road.
Kind of behind Trittown?
Behind Trittown, up on the hill next to Latimer Brook.
Yes.
I know exactly the site.
Okay, good. Next, is any business on the floor if the majority of the commission votes to discuss it? So, why don't, tonight we start with Mr. Peck and just go down the row, and if anyone has a motion to put business on the floor tonight, we'll vote on it.
Very briefly, I mentioned last time about the possibility of installing the design district regulations that we put in for the CB zone. Consider putting that into the CA zone, which basically, excuse me, I'm sorry, you already did that. The regulation we put in to the CB zone, which was to disallow new mixed use, but still allow, if somebody has a one-story building, you can add apartments on top. The object was to, because there's such a demand for this type of development, the object was to try to preserve these buildings that have been torn down, preserve these buildings that could be torn down. I'd like to get a consensus. If it looks like, if you feel it's a good idea, then we'll get a short, a small Subcommittee and meet.
I'd actually be interested in looking at what the Subcommittee would come up with, but also looking at the text amendment that was approved for last time to see if there's any way to improve or tweak it, maybe look at everything in that text amendment and then see how it could apply to both areas.
Can I make a quick comment?
Please.
I've talked to some developers, investors in town and so forth about this, and I was also before that even thinking about this. I think there's, you know, in these different areas, there's a number of buildings that need to be protected and the way we're talking about now could certainly do that. But there's also a number of buildings that could be redeveloped with no, and result in a benefit to the community and with mixed use. And so, I'm trying to want, think about finding a way where we can do the, do both of these things, you know? And maybe it's a slightly different variation. It's tweaking is what you're talking about. Maybe it's through a special permit approach where we're scrutinized more carefully or something, but there's also, even with some of these more, you know, valued historic, quote-unquote, properties, allowing development so that, like the senior housing project that's behind the historic building on Old Post Road, where you can incentivize development like that and end up with a protected building in front of it is another variation on this. So, I support the idea of tweaking, finding a site variation on the formula. Right now, what we have is a good protection, but I think it should be temporary.
Would you and Mr. Peck like to be a Subcommittee to look into a text amendment?
I think we, I'd be happy to do that.
I would prefer that the Chairman be involved, and we don't need a big committee. I think the Chairman should be typically is on every Subcommittee.
That's not been my experience, but I have a time limitation of being on the short-term rental committee. I really don't think I could give the time to it.
Would I be an acceptable substitute?
Absolutely.
Is that okay with you?
Whoever, yeah, whoever would like to contribute to this, I think, would be great.
Excellent, done.
Do you have anything tonight?
No.
Okay.
No. I just have one question for the Committee, which is that I've been thinking about asking, putting a motion on the table, not tonight, but in the future, and some interested in your general impression of it. And that is asking, that we would ask the Board of Supervisors for the same authority that the Planning Commission has, which is to be able to charge a professional legal consultation fee based on the actual cost of services, should we need to hire additional occasional consultant services to evaluate complex projects going forward. And we're allowed to do that under state law, and I think staff sometimes is fully maxed out, and in different specialized areas, I think we can use those services. So, I'm curious, people, would find that objectionable or be interested in seeing and discussing that?
Are you talking about, I brought that up some years ago, and I believe it has to be a town ordinance.
Correct.
Isn't that?
That's correct.
Where you require that the developer pay for a consultant for the zoning commission.
I would need to refresh on that statute. I do remember that discussion at that time, but it's been a while since I've looked at the statute, and I don't know if it's been amended since that time. So, I would, could look into that and report back.
I don't see why we couldn't ask what funds were available for consultants or legal I know the budget isn't huge, but it would be worth looking into.
So, I will look into that and report back, is that what?
Thank you.
Well, the Selectmen will kick it back to us, tell us to provide a budget and give it to finance. So, that's going to be the stumbling block. I have no objection to the idea. The money's going to be the problem.
This doesn't require a penny from the town budget, that's the reason for doing this. This allows the, us to pass through the cost of hiring consultants, like the village consultant or any other cut specialized.
On a project, we may be able to pass that on, but as I said, I'd like to refresh on the statute.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, then, we know what we're talking about, if necessary, we could consult legal as well, but let's explore the statute first, our world cortex, see what I find and share that with all of you, and then we can move, you can kick that issue around and decide what you want to do as a group.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Markovitz, do you have anything tonight?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
We do have some correspondence in the folder tonight. There's actually some kind of workshop from the Pollinator Pathway Group, and I believe Mr. Paivo had some things he wanted to share.
In the interest of the evening, I've just given you guys some information for other issues I'd like to discuss in the future. One has to do with the Affordable Housing Moratorium, 830G Moratorium, and a table that shows that we do qualify for that now, so you can look at that at your leisure. And the other is several, or three, examples of site planning guidelines or standards for multifamily housing. And I think that our site planning section of the code is not up to date, to put it mildly, with respect to those standards, and we should be, I think, talking about what, adopting them as these projects come at us. And these are just examples of that. They're easy to split through and you'll see what I'm talking about. I'd like to bring that up for discussion in the future.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have tonight is in the future, we also probably need to relook at how the architectural review is worded in the regulations as far as hiring an architect, but we can do that another night. I believe, Mr. Mahal, do you have anything?
I have nothing this evening, at the time.
Ms. Hardy, do you have anything for us tonight?
I would be great, but I think some of the remarks will have some relevance to this evening's meeting. So, Board of Selectmen has not met since your last meeting because of the way the calendar fell, so you'll be spared that. But I'd like to go back a little bit in history, when we originally had a Conservation Commission, and we, the town began to be overloaded with development requests, things. Meetings were lasting until midnight, which when we had to stop the meetings because we didn't have an agenda for the next day. So, to solve the problem, the Conservation Commission was split into the Inland Wetlands Commission, the Commission of Natural Resources, to have had equal power. But that is not the way that it has worked out, and in my opinion, this is something that needs to be remedied. We have important information that's available from the Commission of Natural Resources. Nobody asks for that. Nobody asks for a report from them. They meet, their meetings are very informative. We have a lot of experienced professional people on that commission, and basically, they're unheard. In some previous discussions, Inland Wetlands was supposed to take the responsibility for putting on their agenda and hearing from them on a regular basis. That has not happened. As you hear, as you heard Ms. Heller tonight, she had some very important information. We have scientists, professionals on that commission that could easily address some of these issues, but there's no mechanism in place for that to happen. She showed up tonight at the request of the Conservation Commission, but didn't really have a place on the agenda. Her comments are very germane to the discussion. She represents another commission. She shouldn't be relegated to have to speak under public delegations. So, I think that this is something that we need to work on and remedy, because much of the information that was discussed tonight, several of those people, I mean, we have people, scientists who were employed at, chemist at Pfizer, we have, this was a career from Ms. Heller. We also have another expert, retired expert. So, I think we need to figure out a way to remedy this, either by occasionally putting that on the agenda for comments, for updates, and that leads me also to the Aquafor Protection Commission. Now, we did not have that commission at the time that we had, that we split the Conservation Commission. That requirement came later as a requirement from the state that every community had to have an Aquafor Protection Plan. So, the question was, where would that go? And it fell in the lap of yours truly over here, for the zoning commission, as part of the zoning commission, but still, it had to be listed as a separate recording to meet the state's standards. I was opposed to that because I felt that Aquafor Protection fell more proper, fell more properly under Inland Wetlands or as a, as a portion of the Commission of Natural Resources. Unfortunately for Mr. Mahal, I lost. So, now this is part of zoning, but here again, we seldom have a meeting. If we have an opportunity, as just randomly you heard tonight from Mr. Kalau, that we can, we can call meetings as needed, and originally, the Aquafor Protection Commission was much larger, and for some reason, it was decided to reduce the area, where, when we already had a plan which would have protected larger areas. This can be open again for discussion. We can, on appeal, go back to the state and ask to have our area expanded, or if we don't need that much, but I think it's something, again, that needs to be examined, and I think it's very germane to the problems that you're going to be encountering as we have more and more developments come forward on the table. This is becoming almost a monthly occurrence. So, those are my comments for this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding Board of Selectmen business, we do meet on Wednesday, or anything else you'd like to ask.
How can we, let's try to resolve this Aquafor Protection thing right now. What's, what can we do to make a decision to go back to the state, to give it, no offense, Ms. Heller, Mrs. Heller, or?
I think that this is something that would, it's not something that can be decided tonight.
Tonight, that's what I was going to say.
But it's, but it's something, we've had a lengthy night, but as Mr. Paivo said earlier, I think we need to start an agenda so that we aren't overwhelmed and bring up some of these things. Certainly, Mr. Mahal will have some ideas. I don't know if Mr. Peck, you were involved in that original decision, but my recollection is that you were, and I think that, I think we've, we've got to sort of enlarge our circle and get a plan.
Well, you gave us a lot to think about, thank you.
On this, having the Conservation Commission give us input.
Yes.
How about if I make a motion that we require that they give us a referral for any?
I don't know that you could essentially do that. We need to do some review. Technically, there are no referral requirements to this particular commission. Everybody's welcome to come and testify historically.
Maybe we could make it a requirement.
So, yeah, and that may be possible, so I question, I've got to look into that to make sure what we do is legal, because you have applicants, and as we saw this evening, that will challenge some of the things that we do, so we want to make sure we're on legal ground.
This would be effective in a future date.
Well, well, we need to look into it, make sure we're on legal.
I'd like to do some more research on it.
Before we do anything, and it's easy to do, we can check into that, and I'm happy to do that.
Let us know next time.
We can simply have it on the agenda as an item. There would not be any action, but as a report, since you have comments, well, ex officio set up, but I agree with Bill that this is something that would need to be researched because, as we all know, we all have restrictions. So, we want to be legal.
We want to be legal.
We want to save our money to spend on something else.
Thank you. And I, Ms. Sesko was not at planning, so we won't get that report. Ms. Kalau, will you be able to go March 12th to the planning meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, let me adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I think we're adjourned. Thank you.